I welcome you to tonight's candidate event. This is a forum, meaning that the moderator will ask each of the candidates a question, and they'll have an opportunity to respond. We are hosting the candidates for the primary, the candidates who have challengers in the primary, from districts one and two. In the primary, your vote determines who represents their party in the November election. So that's why all of the candidates were listed in the Sentinel article earlier this week, but the candidates who are participating tonight are the ones who have challengers in the primary election. We'll be holding more candidate events after the primary and before the general election. So be watching our website and come back. The League of Women Voters is a strictly nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active civic participation. The League never supports nor opposes candidates. We do take stands on issues that we've studied. The League is open to all adults over 16, men and women. For more information about the League, please feel free to pick up something on your way out or visit our website. One of the League's most important goals is to assist voters in making informed choices at the polls. Therefore, we're sponsoring this candidate forum tonight. We have three candidates participating. All of the candidates have challengers in the primary election for districts one or two. Everyone who has challengers was invited to attend. These candidates are running for a seat on the Ottawa County Commission. Their term is for four years. Participating tonight are Jim Berry, District one, Gretchen Cosby, District one, and Jordan Jorisma, District two. Our moderator for the forum is League member Penny Schuff. Our timekeeper is Tina Pollak. Questions for the candidates have been gathered from the public and League members. The focus of tonight's questions is the County Commission. Now, this time, I ask everyone to please turn off your cell phones and other electronic devices. No cameras or recorders unless authorized by the League or law. This program is being recorded and will be available for viewing on the website in a few days, also on our YouTube channel. The video is the property of the League of Women Voters of the Holland area. Neither video nor audio clips may be copied, edited, or used for any political advertising. We ask that members of the audience listen respectfully and refrain from any comments or reactions while the candidates are speaking. There will be an opportunity at the end of the forum to applaud the candidates. Our moderator Penny Schuff will now outline the format, review the rules, and lead tonight's forum.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for spending Tuesday evening here. So I will outline the rules. These rules were given to all three of the candidates, and they have agreed to them. So each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. Then a question and answer period will follow. Each candidate will have a minute and a half for their response to each question. Each question will be posed to each one of them, obviously the same question. You will have two minutes for a closing statement after we go through our rounds of forum questions. Lovely Tina, and I will be here with a 30 seconds just to give you an idea for a wrap-up. Time limits will be strictly observed, a 30-second warning as I said, and when the stop indicator is shown, please follow the rules. The order of who speaks first, second was determined alphabetically by the candidates, and we will rotate after that. So everybody, after I change to a new question, we will move forward so that everybody gets a chance to be the first to answer. Questions were solicited from voters in the League of Women Voters website as well as our Facebook page. The questions will be directed, as I said, to all of the candidates in succession. As for me, the moderator, I reserve the right to interrupt the candidates if the candidates are straying from the subject or engaging in any personal attacks, which I'm sure will not be happening. This is a forum. It's not a debate. So let's make sure that we understand what that is. The debate that we know cross-talk, that's just not allowed. The forum is just to answer the questions, and then people get to observe what that is. So one more check of your cellphone. Make sure that it's turned off so that we can be fully present, we can have our full attention. And take a seat. Come on in. All right, so let's begin. So do you mind if I refer to you by your first names? Gretchen says okay, okay. So an opening statement, so Jim Berry, you will be first to give an opening statement, and you will have to pass the mic along. That might be a little uncomfortable. So your opening statement, please.
All right. Thank you very much, Penny. And thank you to all of you for taking time on a Tuesday night to come out for this. And it's kind of like church, we still have seats up front here. But glad you're all here, and I'm happy to introduce myself. My name is Jim Berry, and I live in Park Township in the Warrstow Woods area. My wife Liz and I, we've been married for 17 years now, and we've got four adult children between the two of us, and we've got two grandchildren. And for a career, I've been a Realtor. I had Caldwell Banker Woodland Schmidt for the past 10 years, where I'm an associate broker. Before that, I was a financial advisor, worked for a number of firms, but had the accredited asset management specialist designation from the College for Financial Planning. I grew up in the Holland-Zealand area, actually graduated from Zealand High, just a block down the street here, and went on to Grand Valley State Colleges when I went there, but a bachelor of science degree from Grand Valley. And lived most of my life in Ottawa County. In public service, I've got some board experience. I spent 15 years as the Park Township representative to the Herrick District Library Board of Trustees. Most of that time, I also served as treasurer to the board. Liz and I are active with our church. I've served on bestry as church treasurer, and currently I'm chairman of the endowment board that we have at our church. I got into this because, like a lot of folks, saw the headlines, heard the news about what was happening in county government, and had some concerns about governance issues. I'm at a point in my life where the kids are grown, I've got some flexibility in my schedule, and I've got a passion to want to be involved with my community, try to help my community, and wanted to step up and see what I could contribute. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gretchen Cosby, and I'm the Ottawa County Commissioner for District one. There's been much said about Ottawa impact, its origins, beliefs, and practices. I cannot control that narrative, and I won't use my time tonight defending a parental rights organization. Instead, what I will focus on is what I or we have accomplished in the last 18 months, practical work priorities for the next term, and taking questions from the audience or from who has written in, and I'd like to have a civil discussion on matters that are important to Ottawa County. During my 18-month tenure, I hold three principles at the core of the work of Ottawa County. Leadership matters. Roles from the county administrator to the animal control officer must be filled with people of integrity, committed to service, and aligned around a solid plan for Ottawa County's future. Financial responsibility matters. Ottawa County is financially healthy, but this doesn't permit thoughtless waste, and I believe in a zero-based budget process. Transparency matters. Honesty and complete communication is essential. I will continue to be available, present issues clearly, and listen to address constituents' concerns. Samples of accomplishments. As a board member and later chair of Community Mental Health Ottawa County, I've helped recruit a strong team of community stakeholders, recruited a superior interim director at CMHOC, created a mental health village steering committee to review the funding efforts. As chair of the finance committee, acquired new budget software for better departmental control, commissioned budget usage assessment to reduce operation costs for 2025, and the board adopted a fiscal year 2024 budget with one of the smallest increases in the recent history of 3.959%. We also maintained the county's AAA bond rating. Next term, while we have made great progress, there is more to do. I would like to address water scarcity, energy security, housing, and agriculture. Agriculture is a crucial part of our economy. I thank you for your support and trust, and let's continue working together to keep Ottawa County exceptional.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Jordan Jorisma. I am from Northside, Holland. I grew up right across the street from Bowerman's Blue Berries, lived in the Holland area my whole life, except for the Graves' Temple where I went to Calvin, not Hope, I know. Graduated with a degree in economics, and now I work out in Lansing for a Republican state representative out there. I get to work on a lot of great issues. Worked on foster care issues, public safety issues, taxation, and just trying to make our government run as effectively as possible and work for the people. So I want to bring that experience, the legislative experience, to Ottawa County here, and really, it's, I think, fairly simple. There's three main points of why I'm running, and the number one is stop wasting our tax dollars. I think we've seen a lot that's happened over the last year, and even before that too, and I think everyone in Ottawa County deserves effective stewardship of our money. And that means, number two, getting back to basics, funding our roads, funding law and order and public safety, and helping first-time homebuyers. I live on the north side with my wife Liz, who's here tonight, and we got married last summer and had to go through the process of trying to find a house and buy a house, and it's tough, and that affects everyone, not just the people who are buying the house, but that affects the whole community. And the last one is stability. I think everyone who has worked in a business or worked in any organization knows that stability is crucial. If you don't have stability from budgets to staff, services are going to falter, and it can cause real problems. So that's why I'm running. I think we can do better, and we should do better, and if you live in District two, I hope you look at voting for me in August. Thanks.
So remember to keep the mic close to your mouth, and we'll start with Jim with the first question. Okay. What qualifications, and by the way, if you need me to repeat in between, there's no problem. What qualifications, experiences do you have that will enable you to fulfill your responsibilities as a commissioner? Jim, you start first.
I guess I kind of got into that part in my introduction, but you know, the fact that I work in the private sector, work in business and real estate and investments, and the fact that I have board experience, having served on the Herrick District Library Board of Trustees, that experience and background gives me a feeling for how process is so important in managing public money and managing public organizations, the process and how people are hired and fired and procurement's taking place, that there needs to be confidence in that entire process start to end. Transparency is a big issue. Transparency also leads to confidence in the community of the actions that are taking place by the board. Those are things that I think we've been lacking in the past 18 months or so, and that's the kind of thing I would hope to bring to the organization.
Okay, so could you repeat the question? What qualifications and/or experiences do you have that enable you to fulfill your responsibilities as a commissioner?
So I've got 18 months in the role currently, and prior to that, when I was running, I would explain to people that I'm a nurse and I'm not a politician. I earnestly am not a politician. I've worked in the healthcare arena, like I said, approximately 30 years or more, have responsibility for large budgets, approximately $30 million, FTEs, approximately 100 FTEs at one given time. Right now, I think my healthcare experience has been very valuable. I taught mental health. I'm now board chair for mental health. I was a member of NAMI. I have created, it was called Movie Day. Basically, it was an opportunity for consumers to actually come and integrate with healthcare workers, and we would talk, we would bring up, it was an annual event, and we would actually do movies of schizophrenia, for instance, or bipolar disorder, have consumers come speak on behalf of like what that life experience was like, and then also have an opportunity to integrate in their community. CEUs were awarded with that as well. But the budget here for community mental health, I believe, is one of the largest departmental budgets. I believe it's number two. And then also, our health department has a sizable budget as well. So I've been asking them, you know, questions regarding, you know, it's like, what programs do our community members use? What do those volumes actually look like? And then, how much money are we spending on each one of those programs? I would like to direct funds to the programs that the community members are actually using and spend more time supporting the consumer needs that actually are here in our community. For instance, housing is one of the largest ones. Sorry.
Like I mentioned in my introduction as well, I work out in Lansing, and I'm a legislative director, so I get to work on bills, many of which have become law, and implementing good and sound policy. I think that there's a lot of overlap, and even from a budgetary perspective, a lot of money comes from the state to the county, and there's a lot of overlap between government structures and a lot of experience that will transfer over there. I'm also a member of the Land Bank Authority. We get to work on great projects around the county, redeveloping and bringing businesses back and housing back to the county. So I've got a lot of ideas there and a lot of experience, but I'm very eager to implement some of those in our county. I think there's a long way to go, and once we get back on track and stabilize what's happening with our county, I think we've got a great opportunity for our strategic vision going forward and making Ottawa County really a destination, as everyone who lives here knows it already is, but making it great for everyone who lives here.
Okay, thank you. So my next question is, and you could be more specific, if elected or you are an incumbent, but what will your spending priorities be as a commissioner, spending priorities? And please be specific. Will you make any changes that are currently happening now, and what would they be?
Spending priorities that I've been addressing even currently, I've been working with Habitat for Humanity Lakeshore and Jubilee Ministries, actually looking for housing opportunities and individual single homes, building up wealth in our community, individual wealth. We're trying to divert some funds that direction. The ARPA dollars originally were intended for housing purposes, but they were moved into that budget called Board Initiatives, and so we're trying to figure out how a county actually helps operationally support organizations like that to help with their housing needs, actually. Some of the other work I would like to start seeing the County Commission do would be related to, and I'm drawing a blank here, folks, some of the fiscal responsibility, I would say. We've done some work in and around childhood innocence. I would like to see more investment in that regard. We have been investing in services for human trafficking in the community as well. I would like to see more work being done to support our sheriff's department and the deputies that feed people, like they have been basically understaffed, and get an assessment done as far as that's concerned. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask a question, Jordan? Jordan, the question is, if elected, what will your spending priorities be as a commissioner? And please be specific if you would change anything that's currently happening.
Yeah, thanks for the question. So as a conservative, I, you know, think that we need to steward our tax dollars as best as we can, and that is, that means two budget principles, as stretch it every dollar as far as it can go, and add stability. And I kind of addressed that earlier, but a zero-based budget is a great start, every year taking assessment of what do we really need? Do we need this? Is this working, and how can we make it work better? But on top of that, making sure that there is stability. I think we've seen what can happen when departments are at risk of losing huge amounts of funding and what kind of services collapse. So my mother was a public school teacher for, gosh, 30 years at West Ottawa, and one of the headlines we saw, and thank goodness it hasn't happened yet, but on the table was cutting funding for Miles for Smiles, which is a great program that will equip a van to have these dentists come pro bono and do dental work for students and things like that. They're crucial to the people in these communities, and if we don't prioritize things like that, there's really going to be a lot of folks that miss out. So stability and stretching every dollar as far as we can go, getting back to the basics, roads, law and order, housing, things like that.
Would you like me to repeat?
Sure.
If elected, what will your spending priorities be as a commissioner? Please be specific if there would be any changes you would make that's currently happening now.
Thank you. One of the primary responsibilities of county government, excuse me, is local administration, local administration, there we go, I hurt myself even, is local administration of a lot of money that comes down from the state, from the federal government, and some of the stuff is mandated by the state. So we're talking about public safety, public health, parks, things that traditionally in a county budget. Looking at needs, looking forward at the needs from the county, this has been touched on lightly here, but housing is a critical issue. As a Realtor, I see this constantly. A young couple is trying to get started. $200,000 starter home doesn't exist in Ottawa County anymore. This is a big problem. There are jobs in Ottawa County, but aren't places to live in Ottawa County. So this is an issue that needs to be taken, addressed, and I think we can stretch the dollars of the county by looking at public-private partnerships to encourage development and try to do some new thinking to housing, but working together, collaboration with other units of government, because zoning is going to come into this, and just trying to work out some new solutions that we can do, great housing that people can start to build their personal wealth with, and see our county continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question is for Jordan. When hiring staff, what policies do you feel should be followed? And would you seek input from the human resources staff in a county when positions are open?
Yeah, thanks for the question. I think that's a great one because staff is really one of the big areas where we've been lacking over the last year. I think human resources professionals typically are extremely well-trained, and they are trained in hiring processes and best practices and what to look for with qualified candidates. So I would absolutely advocate for coordinating with the human resources department with hiring for many of the positions. Obviously, there's some, in the case of certain appointments, where the board has to take a more active hand, and I'm all for that, but I still think that best practices, a list of qualifications, and then following those qualifications. There's been instances over the last two years of staff that have been hired that don't meet qualifications, and the people who are really hurt are sitting in this room. It's the people of Ottawa County. So we, as public servants, owe our citizens the most qualified professionals, and that's always what Ottawa County was for years. We had the gold standard of county staff, and we need to make sure that we keep that. We need to stop the hemorrhage of large amounts of staff leaving. It hurts services, and it hurts us all. So we need to do a better job hiring people.
Okay, Jim, when hiring staff, if you are elected, what policies do you feel should be followed? And would you seek input from human resources staff in the county when positions are open?
Sure. This is a great point that I was getting to when I was discussing the following process. Hiring is a critical function of county government. We went through this with the library. When you have open positions, you need a written job description of what exactly are you looking for in this, in the person that's going to fill this position. There should be a list of prerequisites to be considered to be hired for this position. For something like a county administrator or some of the top positions within the county, recruiting firm or head-hunting firm should maybe even be involved and do a search that's at least on a regional basis, if not on a national basis, to find the best qualified person that can come in and take this function. Ottawa County is the southern biggest county in the state of Michigan and the fastest-growing, and our practices should be first-rate and be available that people understand what's happening and how it's happening. Again, with a county administrator, a position like that, there should have even been an opportunity for public input, a public hearing where the public would have a chance to ask questions and gain confidence on the choices that were being made. But as far as administrative staff goes, I would agree with what my friend from District Two would say, that administrative staff serves a valuable function in verifying resumes and CVs and following up on resumes, and also guiding the board in any possible traps that might be with employment law. So it's a process.
Okay, I just want to circle back and want to make sure that it's understood that we fully have funded the roads, we have fully funded the sheriff's department, and even provided raises there. My history has been around wellness and prevention, too. Whole work has, at least 15 years of wellness and prevention, so Miles for Smiles is something that I really want to gain more funding for, just needed to know the numbers. I'd like to expand it into twenties, into the twenties as well. So regarding hiring this concern, I will say, I think this might be pointed at the CMH position, our new executive director, interim executive director. I was surprised to learn there was no job description for that role. There was only a contract. And actually, the CMH board, per the public health code, is responsible for hiring that position. I did, in fact, engage with human resources, and I was really looking for their input and structure as to, you know, how we, here we had two candidates. One candidate did pull out, but we're really, really lucky to have somebody who is highly qualified. As a matter of fact, probably sets the benchmark in the state with his qualifications. So, you know, it's like, I know that there's been a lot of dialogue in and around the county administrator. I can give you details as it relates to that. It was not a decision that I wanted to make, and it certainly wasn't a decision that day that I wanted to make, and I would have used a hiring agency in hindsight, but I made a mistake. Lack of knowledge.
Okay. You're up there. You're going to be first. Okay.
I'm glad you're keeping track.
I am keeping track. Okay. Well, since the community mental health has been evoked a few times, let's go there. This question is, should the board, the current county, as a county commissioner, would you want to continue engaging in what some say is micromanaging of the community mental health department? Should we attempt to continue to control like topics or vendors that community mental health usually takes care of in-house?
I think this is part of a bigger trend we've seen in the past two years here, where the board is drifting a little what I would consider to be out of their lane into a micromanaging situation. I think the board should serve an advisory function. I think you hire the smartest and best people that you can throughout the staffing and let smart, qualified people do their jobs. There's still oversight on that, there's still guidance on that, but I don't believe it's the job of the county commissioner to be micromanaging individual vendors and some of those sorts of things.
In relationship to the grant funding that we've been looking into, I would say a good example would be a grant from Wayne State University that was offered to the health department, actually, for capturing some data from our intellectual and developmental disabilities population. They offered $10,000 to help improve our doors to make sure that they were ADA compliant, but also what they were asking for was a vaccination status, whether or not they had been fully vaccinated, or just their vaccination status. And this information is actually available on MICR, and I wanted to know why you would go so specific to that population, intellectual and developmental disabilities. I don't think you want your healthcare information being made available to Wayne State University without your knowledge of it. So what we did is kind of solve two things. We didn't have a We didn't have a capital improvement process here in the county. They had, if they had extra money, they would go ahead and spend it on capital improvement, improvement projects. And they had a committee that would help them with, you know, like determine prioritization. So we developed a capital improvement committee. And they have prioritized projects. We're spending $5 million over the course of five years. And all of our buildings will be ADA compliant. So we met both needs, but we didn't sell your information to Wayne State.
Yeah, I think that's a, it's an excellent question and it's worth begging that question for every department. And it comes down to, to two factors and that's, do you trust your staff? And what is the staff's responsibility? And obviously, as public servants, we shouldn't take a hands-off approach. As the elected officials, we're the ones that are given the trust by voters. And as stewards of that trust, we are responsible for having accountability within the departments. That's crucial. But that starts with hiring good people, trusting your staff, and an ongoing dialogue. When you create tension and fear and toxicity with the staff, it becomes very hard to have that dialogue. But at the same token, every decision that your department should make should be defensible. And they should be completely okay with coming before the board and defending those positions. Every dollar that they spend, every outcome that they, they get, and every service they provide should all be publicly available and transparent and defensible. So the answer is probably somewhere in the middle, though it shouldn't be micromanaging. But the board should have a hand, and I don't think that should offend anyone.
What is your position on communicating with constituents? Even constituents who don't agree with your position? What is your, how do you, what is your communication style? Or what is, what is your position on communicating with your constituents?
And actually, I've spent a lot of time kind of reaching out to constituents that were unhappy with me and inviting them for coffee. There was a situation early on with Howland Sentinel and letters to the editor. And some of the people who actually wrote, wrote as if they had spoken with me. And so I've had several, multiple conversations with people who have written things about me. And we had conversations over coffee and tea. And I don't, yeah, it's like, we might not always agree, but I do believe in that civil discourse is where we need to get to. I'm not afraid of the difficult conversations. I may be a little bit nervous up here today because I feel like I've walked into the lion's den, but I want to be that kind of transparent with you. I am that transparent. I'm, you know, it's like, again, you know, I might disagree, but, you know, it's like, I am listening to your concerns and I'm always wondering if there's something else I'm not hearing or, you know, I'm not aware of. And I really appreciate it when you do reach out. But let's just be civil as we dialogue back and forth. Let's be solution-seeking and not, I'm so sad, you know, because I truly love my people. It's why I became a nurse. And I don't want it to be hate-filled. I want us to figure out where that bridge is.
Jordan.
Obviously transparency is hugely important and I think that starts by following the law. I mean, right from the get-go, there were questions with our current board on Open Meetings Act compliance. And, you know, whether or not the Open Meetings Act was actually violated, there's a difference between when it comes to that, the letter of the law and the spirit of the law and being transparent. It shouldn't be about dotting your i's and crossing your t's. It's about a posture of transparency. I mean, I've got my phone number, my email on all of my lit. I've been called by people who absolutely hate me, but it would seem, and people who are all about what I'm doing. And I welcome those phone calls. I would love to have conversations. I'll talk to reporters, I'll talk to constituents, I'll talk to people who aren't in the district. But that shouldn't even be a question. As a public servant, you're there to be the voice of the people. You're accountable to the people. And that's what every public servant should, should try to simplify.
Would you like me to restate? Oh, okay. What is your position on communicating with constituents, even those who don't necessarily agree with your positions?
I'm all for it. Being accessible, being in the community, being able to have conversations with people is, is critical. I mean, we were representing, we're, we're all running here to be representatives of the folks in our district. And we want to do the best job we can for people in our community. And we might think we know what, what people are thinking, but feedback is, is critical. Communication is a, is a two-way street too. So way by as I live, we're out in the community quite a bit and pretty accessible. Like Jordan, I've got my address and my phone number on my campaign literature. As a Realtor, I spend a lot of money to make myself accessible to people. But I think, but I think it's important to be out there in the community. And it's, it's been a great experience working on this campaign. I've met a lot of great people. Had some, a lot of people maybe not so great, but they had a lot of ideas of how I could improve myself. But that, but that's part of the deal. So it's, that communication, I would hope I can continue that and be accessible. And I want to hear from the folks.
Thank you. Okay, this next one will be firstly directed at Jordan. Thank you for putting up this. Okay, let's get a little bit more specific about a particular department. If elected, what is your position on the public health department? For example, would you resume services that have been curtailed or eliminated recently? Expand.
Yeah, that's a good question. And I think one that is, was certainly top of mind a year or two ago. And, you know, it goes back to what I said earlier. It's about stability and it's about trust. I've got a family friend that works in the public health department. And she's talked to me after church on more than one occasion, you know, crying because she's so upset, afraid for her job, and that's unacceptable. We can't, we can't have that with our county staff. Does that mean resuming every, every service we've done throughout 2020, you know, COVID on? Well, we know a lot more than we do now. And so the answer to that would be no, probably not. But everything we do as county commissioners should be done in consultation with our staff, with our advisors, with our fellow county commissioners. And so I think there, it's not quite a simple answer. Would I cut their budget in half? Almost certainly not. I think that, that's a very dangerous thing. But does that mean, you know, vesting unlimited power in any department? No, no, it doesn't. So, you know, again, maybe somewhere in the middle, but, you know, you trust your staff. You, you have defensible services and defensible decisions and that should be our goal. We should strive for excellence in all of our departments.
Would you like me to restate?
No, I think I've got it. I was kidding you before. Health department has certainly been in the news here in the past two years or so. Like Jordan, I would agree. The size of the health department doesn't need to be the size it was at the height of COVID when we didn't know what was going on. And, and again, there were a lot of mistakes made, but, but people were doing the best they could with the information they had. But we're post-COVID now. That would stand, be reasonable to expect some stand-down of, of things. But I think it feels like there's been an attempt to try to dismantle the public health department, brick by brick, trying to reduce its scope and its effectiveness. And I think one area that this has popped up in is the Ottawa food situation. There was a coordinator for that position. It's a single position. Thought I heard one point, it was about an $80,000 line item in the budget. And, and when we were doing the budget last September or October, I guess, everybody said they wanted to protect Ottawa food, but that position was eliminated and it hasn't been filled yet. I took some time and went to the Community Action House Food Club up in Holland Heights. And I just asked questions about what did that position mean to the 45 volunteer food pantries across the county? And it's had significant impact on it. And those are the kinds of things that can happen if, shouldn't have happened. I think my time's up.
All right. So yes, in my role as a nursing leader, I have actually taken responsibility for different departments. I've moved. And one of the first things I do to kind of understand my work when I'm hired into a leadership role, be it a director or a manager, is ask for, tell me about your patient population. And in this case, with the health department, what I asked for were the programs. Tell me about the programs, how many programs do we have? And then tell me about how many people we see here in the community. And that's why I try to see how many patients I'm actually going to see in a particular department or in a clinic. And for 18 months, I think it was about 18 months, I've asked for those numbers. I think I finally got some metrics, but it's just to better understand. So as we look at the budgeting process and when we have monies that are available for a department, that we're really focusing in on the work that the community needs. It wasn't for elimination of any one program at all. It was my way of trying to better understand the work of the health department. I worked with them with COVID, with the COVID testing center quite hand in glove, as a matter of fact. I've got four pages of contact trace information. So what we did as board of commissioners is ask that we bring that, that budget back down to pre-COVID levels. And we didn't eliminate any FTEs. What we did is send back the COVID-19 pandemic dollars to the federal government because they were very specifically given to the county. Also, the employee that you're talking about for Ottawa Foods, I never, ever said I wanted her to, to leave. None of us got rid of that position. It was a decision that was made within the health department.
Thank you. Okay, this is a totally different subject. And we're starting, we are starting with Barry. Okay, I got this, sure. Okay, it's a little confusing, but, okay, so Barry. Should the principles of diversity and inclusion govern your decisions as a commissioner? Should they?
I think the diversity and equity and inclusion office became, has become a polarizing topic. It was kind of interesting to see what's happened when, in business and academia, seem to be backing away from formal DEI initiatives. I think what happens is it can cause division within, within an organization. You're trying to create unity and it's tough to have measurable metrics of what's, what are we trying to accomplish here and are we accomplishing that? However, and it's a big however, I want to, want to point out, the job of government is serves, and service the people, that we reach the people that need the service, that we're communicating that those services are available, that there are services that fit the needs of where people are, not where we think they ought to be. Service and access has to be the guiding principle on how government services are delivered to people. Whether that's DEI, I don't know, but I'm all for access and, and availability.
Okay, Gretchen, you'll be next. Yeah, would you like me to restate?
Should we, you're talking about the DEI department?
Should the principles, should the principles of diversity and inclusion govern your decisions as a commissioner?
I, I think honestly, I mean, I want to, so diversity and inclusion, those are things that I can get behind. And I have years of probably, well, credit hours of cultural sensitivity and ethnicity training. It's in the core curriculum in every single nursing course. So I want to say that I kind of, I, I am curious about different ethnicities, different cultures. And, and as a nurse, what we try to do is make sure that you tailor your treatment plan to meet those specific needs. What I'm afraid of with DEI is that, you know, we take away meritocracy and we actually start to turn around and it's like a reverse discrimination. I want everybody to have equal opportunity, absolutely. And I think our civil rights laws allow us to do that. You know, oftentimes I hear about access and you're talking about access. We have ADA compliance and again, that's something that we're trying to emphasize right now. But I don't think that somebody should be hired just based upon the way they look or how they're born. I think we need to hire people based upon merit. And if we have some discrepancies as far as our education is concerned, where somebody's not equally getting a job, then we need to fix that first. I come from the public school system. I was raised in a very multicultural world. You know, I have huge compassion for opportunity, but I don't think it's just given because of what you look like. I don't think a position's given just because of what you look like.
I think it's a, it's a great question, especially with how this last county commission term started. And I think those terms can get caught up in a lot of context and controversy. But what matters is what you mean specifically by diversity, equity, and inclusion. If that means teaching critical race theory in school curriculum, no, I wouldn't necessarily be for that. And I don't think the county government should, should be promoting that. If it means following all applicable anti-discrimination laws, Civil Rights Act, Elliott Larson Act, then absolutely, we should do that. We should do that anyways. Whether we need a whole department in order to do that, that's an open question. I'm willing to have that conversation. But, but I think those, those terms can get thrown around a lot. Should we always have diversity? Should we have inclusion in our mind as public servants? The answer is of, of course, to a certain degree because access is crucial. But beyond that, it completely depends on the issue.
This one goes back to Jim. What role should religion play in the job of commissioner and the management of the county?
I think the role of religion is a personal matter. I'm a Christian. It's the foundation of how I see myself in the world, what my, what my, what I'm called to do, how to serve, how I should treat other people. But I think religion is a, is a personal choice. I don't think it's the county's position to advocate for any religion or denomination for that, for that part. But religion does form my conscience and forms things that I need, need attention and should be taken care of. But, but my job as a county commissioner is to be the evangelist.
So religion. I'm a poorly practicing Catholic, so I'm not anti-Catholic too. I think that was written in the newspaper. And actually, I found religion in my work. Again, I'm going to talk about being a nurse. But honestly, it's like my ability to get back and serve somebody else makes me feel good about my purpose. My, it's my intended purpose in this world. And I try to approach that every single day, like what my work should be is to serve you. I really have no interest in myself. I'm very interested in how I can make impact on things like, you know, we have water scarcity issues here in the county or housing issues, especially for my intellectual and developmental disabled. You know, our farmers are really struggling. I'm trying to figure out how it is in my role, my capacity, you elected me, I can be of service to you. Believe me, there's no fame and fortune in this by any means. And I relate oftentimes as a county commissioner to the work that I've done as a nurse and served my people every single day. And that is, you know, kind of my intended purpose. I call it a godly purpose. I really do feel like it's God motivated. Thank you.
Thank you. I grew up a good Calvinist and so one of the terms that I heard constantly growing up was vocation. And the, the concept of vocation is whatever you do, whatever you're calling is, do it with your Christian purpose, with a Christian posture. And that's what I try to have. It affects every decision I make. So religion should absolutely be involved because it's involved in me. And if you elect me to be a public servant, elect me to be a county commissioner, of course, it's going to affect the decisions that I make. Whether or not that means, you know, having specific practices that the, the board advocates for implements is a different question. But there should be- is a different question. But there should be, there should be religion, and just as everyone with any sort of congen just believe. It's impossible to divorce those two, so.
The next one, Gretchen will be first. Okay. So we'll dig just a little bit deeper, a little bit along those lines. Are you in favor of passing general resolutions such as the anti-abortion resolution on other, or other issues that are really not under the purview of the County Commission?
Okay, so I'm in favor of taking a stance for Ottawa County. What do the resolutions actually mean? It's just really fundamentally, you know, our constitution and the rights for people to have beliefs in a belief system. And the resolutions that were passed actually do support, I think, the Christian belief system here in our community. You know, the protecting childhood innocence. This Ottawa impact is actually a parental rights organization. It's been made out to be something that it really truly isn't. It's a group of parents that got together and were concerned about government overreach. And so, you know, they asked for some of their government to help them. And when they found that the government didn't help them, then they took, you know, they used the Constitution, they used the rights of the people of the United States of America, and they ran for office. And so they've used the resolutions to just set basically a standard in our operations more than anything else.
Go back to Jordan. Jordan, are you in favor of passing general resolutions such as the anti-abortion resolution or others that are not necessarily under the purview of the County Commission?
I think it depends on the issue. I think there should be a very high threshold if you are going to do something like that. But what I think is, a public servant is two things. They're an administrator, but they're also a voice of the people. And when we completely forego the first in favor of the second, we get into problems. And we completely ignore the second in favor of the first, we get problems too. So I think as a County Commissioner, you have to always be in communication with the folks who elected you. And if there are issues that are extremely important to them, that's worth taking into consideration. But should it be the first course of action? No, probably not. It's not what you're elected to do. There's other ways that you can make public statements. Social media is a great way. Follow me on Facebook. You can hear, you know, my values statements, and some of those things that might not be directly related to the County Commission, but other issues that I, I care about. And you can use your voice in order to spread awareness on issues and things that are important. So I'm not completely opposed to it, but I do think that there should be a strong consideration and a high bar on the issue before you, you do something like that.
I may be the most skeptical on this particular topic. I think resolutions that have no teeth, are not in the lane of the county government, I think are meaningless essentially. It can also be a source of friction within the community. I think resolutions, congratulatory resolutions, or if it's Fourth of July, or, you know, something like that, or something that's actually before the county, as a business item in the Board of Commissioners is one thing. I'm open to like an extraordinary situation, unique situation, like Jordan was referring to. But I think it should be rare and unusual to do that if it isn't something that's actually an issue that the county can do something about.
All right, this next one will start with Jordan.
Ottawa County is one of the fastest growing, I think it is the fastest growing county in the state of Michigan. And it seems like we're always trying to balance increasing economic opportunities with the environment. What would you do to help increase job opportunities while at the same time protecting particularly our water?
Yeah, 100%. That's a great question. I saw Joe Bush came in earlier. I don't know if he's still here, but I've had a lot of great conversations with him and, and farmers. I married into a family of farmers. And so water is, is not something that I ever cared about as much as I do now. So, yeah, no, I, particularly when we're talking about housing, it's clear we need more of it. But there's a lot of questions when you're putting in developments or even single homes about what's going to happen to the aquifer. And it's, it's bleeding. And so we have to pay attention to that. We can't make any rash decisions. We need to have a very thoughtful plan. And I think in consultation with our Water Resources Commissioner and our other professionals, we can come to a good consensus, whether that's, you know, limiting the amount of shallow wells in the county or expanding city water. I think that there are, there are definitely solutions. But it's definitely something we need to address as well.
Probably one of the biggest environmental issues in Ottawa County is aquifer situation. This has been referenced a couple of times up here tonight. But as a relative, I said through a presentation from Paul Sacks from Ottawa County, who had a lot of, a lot of real detailed information. We live right next door to one of the biggest freshwater lakes on planet Earth, but that's not the water that feeds the aquifers that's used for well water and agriculture uses. So we've got a twin track going of incredible growth, demand for housing, and still a desire to maintain farmland. There's a Farmland Preservation Committee as a matter of fact. And Park Township is, in their master plan, has stated that's an objective of Park Township is to maintain the agricultural character of the community. But this aquifer problem, it is, needs to be figured out how it can regenerate itself. And that's, again, gets into housing. These things are all interwinkled, and that's why it's going to take collaboration and partnership from many different levels of government because zoning gets involved with this. State money will probably get involved with it at some point too. But, yeah, it's a real issue, and it's to be fixed yet.
Since we're on the subject of water.
Yeah, water scarcity is a big problem here in Ottawa County. As a matter of fact, our northeast quadrant experienced no water in a housing development. And so we do need to take a look at the aquifers. There are two. And it's the deepwater aquifer that's getting more concentrated actually with nitrates and chlorine. It is ironic because we're on the fourth largest freshwater body in the world. And we do have pumping stations, I believe there are three in Ottawa County that move over to the Grand Rapids area, and yet we're struggling with water. I have challenged actually state and federal, your brother, your brother Boomer, actually, Boomer, to start seeking a solution that way. I think there's a collaborative effort that could be made available with the municipalities, with the county, with the state, and then federal monies. It's going to take a long-term plan. Pat Stachakovich with Public Works is actually working on a master plan. I spoke with Paul today, Paul Sacks, and he's got a really good idea as far as like how we develop actually our land and look at infilling instead of spread. We have a lot of urban sprawl occurring, and each one of these municipalities actually handles their own zoning and planning strategies. So he's trying to create a collaborative effort. We're using the MAC. We're going to go ahead and use Public Works as well and look for a solution for aquifers maybe for the farmers. And then we start infilling our development, our planning and development in the communities so we can use more public water.
Okay, so going back to Barry is first.
Jim, that's good too.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Jim, I'm sorry, Jim. Mr. Barry? Okay. How should the Commissioners, there are many standing committees in the county that have purview over very many different subjects. How should the Commissioners be assigned to these standing committees? And is the current situation appropriate, the ones that, you know, do you think that the committees are staffed correctly with the County Commissioners?
I think when a board is put together, comes in any other term, I think the Board Chair, working in consultation with the other Commissioners, should identify areas where people have expertise, work experience. I've got experience in real estate, some development. People have experience with healthcare. Find, find good fits of the people, the talent that's part of that board already. Utilize that talent to make sure that's being used. As far as assignment to committees go, I mean, I think there's a fairness issue that all these districts in the county deserve representation. And an awful lot of work gets done in committee before it even gets to the full board. So I think there should be some intentional fairness of how these assignments are made so that there's true representation for all the districts in the county, but also utilizing the expertise of Commissioners that are, that are part of the board.
And I agree, actually. So I think that's in relationship to District Two, Chris Kleijens. And I would ask that you take a look at his committee assignments. He does have multiple committee assignments. And I wanted to sit on the CMH Board because of my background in mental health. I taught the subject, have been, I was very actively engaged with that particular subject. Finance Committee, that's one I'd like to pass off, to be really honest with you. I think it's very interesting, but it's very, it's heavy work. It's heavy work. And so, yeah, Jim, we wouldn't be working together, but yeah, welcome to the Finance Committee. I think the distribution, if you look back historically, it's followed basically the same model. You know, the party in power, and I hate to use that word even, a party who, yeah, the larger party gets the higher concentration of committee work. It's work. I'm not putting in, you know, $21,000 worth of work a year, honestly. And I am, I feel very privileged to have the opportunity to serve on the committees that I do. And I think that a lot has been made about our committee distribution that's not factual. And I would ask you to go to the website to see what that committee distribution actually looks like.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I think that there, it is clear that it's, it's not a very fair distribution. And even things like removing people from committees or censuring them, I don't, I don't think that's appropriate. And we've seen some of that action on the Board this year in having people removed from committees, not only removed from committees, but committees they want to be on and have knowledge of. So I think that, like Jim said, working in consultation with, with the incoming Commissioners to put them where they have expertise and the consideration for where they want to go is, is just the smartest way to go about it. So that's my opinion.
All right, thank you. Okay, Gretchen first says. Okay. Do you believe in the commonly accepted or the traditional budget practice of competitive bidding for contracts? And what is, how has your experience played out so far in this?
For RFP, the RFP process, absolutely. I believe in the traditional model. Again, zero-based budgeting as well. No, I think we have engaged in the RFP process. So each department, you know, that is their responsibility when they want to contract with different services, to look for three, typically it's three, if I remember correctly per policy, three different vendors and make a decision based upon the vendors. But I mean, it, it might not be necessarily the one that's most financially, or financially reasonable. It might also be the quality of services that they have to deliver to. So we're not micromanaging to that degree whether or not, and it's like, once the department selects, you know, the vendor that they want to use, then we go ahead and, and we vote on what it is they choose. One thing that our Corporation Council has done is improved, like standardized the contracting process. Apparently, prior to us, the contracts were provided by vendors. And so there were a lot of missing elements. And so what they've been able to do is standardize the contracts, actually, and make sure that the county is protected. Fire suppression is a good example. Apparently, our contract with the party who provided fire suppression, there was a problem with the sprinklers and the sprinklers didn't work. They weren't responsible for any damage to the county building. And in fact, what would have, 30 seconds, stop. Okay. But, yeah, saying what we found out. So we made a contract that made them responsible for some of the damages that actually occurred. They were only responsible for the sprinklers.
Pass to Jordan. Thank you.
Thanks for the question. I think this is one of the biggest concerns that I've heard from people. I was an econ major, and so I'm a big free market advocate. And RFPs are a great way to try and get that meritocracy that we all appreciate about our American system. And, you know, when it comes to things like Corporation Council, that's absolutely one I think we should RFP for. And we've seen issues what happens when, when we don't do that. So I have been concerned by the lack of RFPs and how the RFP process has gone. And I would absolutely return to a best practices standardized RFP process. And that, that's how we, we get our, our best staff, most qualified staff. And that doesn't mean it should always be the cheapest vendor. There are other considerations there too. But you learn those considerations by going and courting multiple vendors, so.
I think this current court got off to a rough start with some of the hiring decisions that they made prior to even being sworn in. Corporate counsel is one area I would start. It's a major position. There should have been a request for proposals. There should have been open for applications. As it's worked out, Calum and Legal Group at the time they were brought onto this, my understanding is they had never represented a municipal entity in any form at all. Again, we're talking about the seventh largest county in the state of Michigan, 300,000 people in population. And I thought that was a pretty rough way to start things. And, you know, throughout the organization, we went to the library over years. I was there, we did an expansion on the north branch. We did some work in the main branch. You know, you get, get these requests for proposals and bring, bring the folks in and go with contracts. And it's, it's been said, the lowest bid is probably not the best bid to take sometimes. But you find the best person for the job where the, where the fit is. And that, that should be standard business process in Ottawa County Government.
Thank you. Okay, this next one is going to start with Jordan. I appreciate you. Jim. Okay. The county has experienced a lot of lawsuits. If you were elected, how would you avoid legal expenses?
Yeah, that's a, I think that's a complicated question. From one standpoint, you can't always control who sues you. But there is certainly, there has certainly been avoidable lawsuits this year. And that, that comes from consistency and stability and creating, I mean, a lot of the lawsuits have come from within, from employees or former employees of the county government. And creating that relationship, that positive relationship from your staff, that's crucial. So that would be one of the major ways. Again, you can't always control who is going to come at you. But that's all the more reason why you hire competent legal counsel. But absolutely, a posture of transparency, a posture of collaboration, building coalitions, working with staff, those are all things that help mitigate those kinds of risks, so.
Jim.
The lawsuits have been one of the most troubling things to me, and was one of the reasons I wanted to get involved in County Commission. As Jordan said, As Jordan said, you can't control who's going to come and sue you, but sometimes if you're your own worst enemy at some of these things, not following standard business practices, some bad hires, trying to fire people in unorthodox way, it's going to invite some issues. And my concern is out of the five suits, only one is resolved. We're still waiting to hear what the legal fees will be that the county is going to pay to that person. We don't know what the full amount will be from a fixed exposure to the county for the four other lawsuits that are out there, plus the possibility of a sixth. So this is very important that we try to wind these down, find resolution on, and make sure that we don't make mistakes in the future. Of course, that doesn't mean that somebody won't come at you for some reason or another, but we need to find ways to reduce the possibility of that happening.
Okay. Well, I want to start off with, because we're talking about lawsuits. Jeff Jordan was actually the city attorney for Lansing, the city of Lansing. So there was municipal experience with Calum Legal. As far as lawsuits are concerned, on November 22nd, I met with John Shea and Patrick Waterman. And then I asked them during our conversation about a job description for the Health Department leadership role. And I asked them for the hiring process out of human resources as well. I knew there'd be a policy in place. They knew that we were looking for candidates because we had heard that Lisa Stefanoski had stepped down, and she was willing to stay until March, or as long as we needed her for. So at that time, had John Shea said to me, Gretchen, you know what? We've been interviewing for that candidate and we have one selected, that lawsuit would never ever have occurred. I contend. As far as the OMA lawsuit that occurred, and that was filed through, it was Brewer and Paddnos, that happened actually on like our first day, on January 3rd. And even Nessel has stated, you know, that Attorney General Nessel, that we did not commit an OMA violation. We weren't sworn in. In any kind of conversations we were having, we could have, we were making sure we were being conscious of it being an OMA violation. So the lawsuits happened, unfortunately. They've been a huge distraction. It feels like we've used lawfare in order to get our point across. They don't like us.
Okay, I've flushed out of questions here. I appreciate all your patience in coming here, and I think we're at the point where we're going to have two minutes for a closing statement. So I believe we're going to do, Jordan first will do it this way.
Thank you. Thanks everyone again for being here. This has been very informative. I appreciate always when people take the time to show up. You know, they say the people in charge are the people who show up, and those are the people who make changes. So kudos to everyone for even being here. But again, my name is Jordan Driss, I'm running for the second district. That's most of Holland Township, one of the basics in Park Township. And I'm running to bring us back to the basics. The basics of funding our roads, funding law and order, first-time home buyers, adding stability back to our government, making sure we're not getting ourselves into trouble, stopping the severance payments, finding resolutions for these lawsuits, building stability with our staff and hiring competent people, and then stretching your dollars as far as they could go. And so I, again, I want to be transparent, I want to be open, and so I hope you come and find me. If you ever have questions, grab my phone number, my email, send me a note. I'd love to hear from you. But thank you all for being here tonight, and I hope you all get out in August and go low.
So as your District One County Commissioner, I have actively worked to align government actions with community needs since my election in 2022, recognizing that the county's exceptional growth and vibrant community, a vibrant community, a champion, champion, transparent governance, financial responsibility, and integrity in leadership. I will focus on sustainable solutions for water management, energy needs, affordable housing, agricultural development, and economic growth, election integrity, freedom of speech, and all, all that are vital for our county's economy. Consistent with my extensive experience in nursing and healthcare leadership, I have a passionate commitment to public service, and I want to continue to drive impactful governance to Ottawa County, serving where and as needed on boards, committees, and county departments to foster a thriving, resilient community. Thank you.
Like our other panelists, I want to thank you for taking the time on a Tuesday night in July, come out here and listen to us. I really appreciate your engagement in the election process. Glad to have you here. I enjoyed the conversation. We talked about a lot of important topics. My goal is to come into county government to serve the residents, serve people, make myself accessible and available to the folks, to get back to a lot of the basics, kind of a reset, get back to what are the traditional purposes of county government. I've just been troubled by Ottawa County government being in the news. And there's, sometimes it's not fair, sometimes it's, I guess maybe it is, but it's in the news a lot, and it seems to be for the wrong reasons. So I would hope we can do a reset, serve the folks, be good stewards of the dollars that people share with us to do this work, and provide a steady, reliable Ottawa County government that serves the people and helps make Ottawa County a great place to live, work, and raise a family. And I appreciate your consideration. I'm running in District One, which is mostly Park Township, Port Sheldon, and Olive Township. And again, appreciate your consideration, and be sure to vote by August 6th.
Oh, thank you. You are a great audience.
Yep.
Very respectful. Thank you so much. And wonderful dialogue. Those were tough questions. Thank you so much for being here, for being open and sharing your thoughts. We really appreciate it. We hope that you gained some insights on the positions and from the responses and the statements of the candidates. Most importantly, vote. If you need more information or want more information about candidates, you can go to vote411.org. That's an online, nonpartisan voter information site that the League of Women Voters sponsors. A reminder that this forum was videotaped and the videotape recording will be posted on our website and our YouTube channel in a couple of days. Copyright ownership of the recordings resides with the League of Women Voters. The candidates and their supporters cannot use the video recording of the forum, portions of the recording, or any audio clips, video clips for political advertising or other purposes without the written permission of the League of Women Voters. Remember that the primary election is on August 6th. Polls will be open on election day from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. There are also other options for you. Absentee ballots are out now. All Michigan voters have the right to vote by absentee ballot. You can return your ballot by mail and the stamps are included, or you can drop it off at a drop box. Additionally, there is an early voting period when you can go in to the early voting site and actually vote in person. That opens on July 27th and closes on August 4th. For more information about absentee validity, confirming your voter registration, finding your drop box, and the hours of the early voting at your early voting site, you can go to vote411, or you can contact your local clerk's office, or you can go to michigan.gov/vote. So thank you again for being here tonight, for being such a good audience, and for being such good candidates. Thank you so much.
I think the candidates have tables in the back, so if you want to check that out and talk a bit further.